Numbered by Jose Enterprise Inc., Por la Frontera Mexican Restaurant. Number seven, approved sponsorship agreement with Girl Scouts of Southern Alabama in the amount of $350 from District Two funds for its leading ladies awards reception. Number eight, approved requests from Alabama Cooperative Extension Service to waive fees for the John Archer Arena for 4-H Archery Students to practice for fall 2022 competitions on the following dates, from 3:30 to 7:00 PM, there will be no costs or preparation for the county. Number nine, approved sponsorship agreement, any amount of $500 from the 18th Annual Alabama Coastal Bird Fest 2022 to be paid from the Environmental Services Department budgeted funds. Number 10, approved sponsorship agreement with Dearborn Young Men's Christian Association, Inc., in the amount of $1,000 from District One funds for the annual Jazzy Blues by the Bay Benefit Concert. Excuse me. Number 11, approved barber services contract with Sean Purnell Rogers for James T. Strickland Youth Center. Number 12, approved sponsorship agreement with Westside Athletic Association of Mobile, Inc., in the amount of $3,592.64 from District Three funds for travel expenses to the Kyle Rickman Major 70 World Series held in Branson, Missouri.
Could we vote on that today, please, so we can get this rolling? I think they've already left and it just kind of got, it fell behind and they're, they've already gone and they really need the money if we could go ahead and vote on it so they could get it as soon as possible.
Commissioner, how don't you make the motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
No, actually, I should have asked for the same thing for four.
Back up then?
Because they start Saturday morning.
Okay, on item number four, is there a motion to approve?
So, maybe.
Second. Thank you for jogging my way.
How to get it out there in time.
Okay, number 13, authorized advertising and receiving bids for a project, African Town Historic Structures Restoration Scott Building. 14, approved pre-treatment program contract for food services facility, discharge permits for the Mobile County Metro Jail and for Strickland Youth Center, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the contract on behalf of Mobile County. Number 15, approved amendment number one to professional services contract with Air Firm and Associates for one-year extension of environmental consulting services. Number 16, approved application for retail beer, retail table wine, alcohol license submitted by MTP 101, Inc., for GB Snow Road. 17, consider taking the following action on bids. 18, approved renewal support agreement with NOBE4 in the amount of $13,996 for security awareness training subscription platinum for the County Commission. 19, approve a 60-day lease agreement for one-sand Pro P Series millimeter machine with Pitney Bowls under the current purchasing cooperative source well, any amount of $737.15 per month for the licensed commission. 20, adopt a sole source resolution approving renewal of software maintenance contract with Data Venture LLC for laser fish software support upgrades, updates, and unlimited technical support by phone, any amount of $17,100 for the sheriff's office. Number 21, adopt a sole source resolution approving onsite EPB inspector training for precinct central software and pole books with 10x software solutions, an amount of $37,500 for the probate court elections. And 22, adopt a resolution requiring Mobile County Commission hire Mobile County residents for certain job positions.
Man, could I get you to flip over and read that entire resolution on number 22, please?
Resolution requiring Mobile County Commission hire Mobile County residents for certain job positions, whereas the Mobile County Commission desires that in the future it will employ Mobile County residents for certain job positions. Now, therefore, the premises considered the Commission resolves that it shall require that all future hires for the positions of county administrator, deputy county administrator, county engineer, county public works director, and all county commission directors to be residents of Mobile County at the time of their hire, or become residents of the Mobile County within the time of their probationary period or within six months thereafter.
So, were you going to say something?
I was, but you can say, you can, okay.
Okay, so, I just want, I found out that this was going to be something we were considering when I got the book yesterday, and after I got it, I decided that I needed to know more about what this would mean. First of all, and I think part of the reason I was interested is because I'm fundamentally opposed to doing this, but then I also wanted to know whether I thought we could do it legally, and if we could do it legally, what it would take to do it legally. I'm opposed to it because of kind of the nature of how we have to do everything in this community. If we told people, for example, if Washington County said, for example, we only want people who live in Washington County to work, to work in Washington County, then that would impact a whole lot of our people. The same thing in Pensacola, in Ingalls, at Ingalls Shipyard. We have, we operate, and when we do our economic development, we sell our labor shed as a 100-mile radius, because we have people driving as far as Demopolis to work in some of our jobs. And so, for me, this is, this does not, this is inconsistent with our whole regional approach to how we do economic development. The second thing is, I don't see any rational basis, and that's the constitutional standard. What is the, what is the rational basis for having a residency requirement? How does it promote the goals of government? And I've, they, I've done some reading last night and this morning, and there are two or three different reasons, none of which are articulated here, and I just suggest that just in case we get sued, we might want to put in a reason why we think this is important. That's, that's, oh, the other thing, in the Personnel Board rules, it says that they only certify that if a jurisdiction has, an appointed authority has a residency requirement, that they only certify people who satisfy the residency requirement. So, the whole idea that we could make an offer to someone, make a condition, what they call a condition subsequent, that we would require them to then become, if they don't live in Mobile County, to then move to Mobile County, this says that they, they don't certify anybody unless they meet the residency requirement. So, basically, what we're doing is somebody applies and they don't already live here, they'll never make it to the, to the employment list, and I'm not sure that's what we, that we want to eliminate people who might be really good workers. Again, I have, I just have to, straight out of the box, as a policy consideration, this is not something I could ever support, but I think it also has some, some legal issues that we really want to evaluate. I don't know whether anybody would ever challenge it, but because this is pretty radical, I think we ought to be prepared for it to be challenged and approach it from that standpoint.
Mr. Doot, do you have any comments?
Jay, have you had an opportunity, or anyone in legal had an opportunity to, I, I think there's residency requirements at the sheriff's office, I think there's residency requirements at, in the city of Mobile, I think there's residence requirements for the fire department, the police department, I think there's already a precedence that this is being done not only in the county, but also maybe in the city of Mobile. And I don't, you know, I just, it's been my opinion, and I think I've made it very clear that if you're working for the county and the taxpayers in Mobile County is paying your salary in a position of a director, I'm not asking that we require every employee to be a Mobile County resident, but I'm saying if you're going to be in a position making the salary of a director, whatever that salary may be, they're, they're different than, and you have possibly even driving a vehicle that's paid for by the taxpayer in Mobile County, that you should be living in Mobile County. That's just, I, you know, I, I know we agree to disagree hopefully on it, but that's just my opinion, and it's just been my stance since the day I was elected, and it will, it will remain, whether this passes or not, that will be my stance, and I think we've actually, even though we haven't had a policy, I think there's one person at least sitting at this table who we, when we voted to hire this person, made that a requirement, and that person met the requirements and lives in Mobile County now. So, I mean, I think if we, even if we didn't have a policy, I probably would vote not to hire a person in a director's position, because that is a commission decision, I believe, and anytime that we hired him. So, that's my stance on it, and, you know.
Typically, we only hire the administrator, the county engineer, and the public works director, and, and the people who work for us. That's all we hire. The rest of them are hired at the various levels.
And I certainly don't want to get sued, that's why I would ask that Jay, or you, you look into it, and if, yeah, absolutely, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I just, I just felt like it was a good position to have, and that's just my stance.
Well, emergency manpower is one of the residency requirements that the courts have upheld, but once you, because they say there's, there's a rational relationship between having your emergency people being able to get to a civil disobedience, a major, you know, some kind of situation like that, there is a, that's a rational reason, but I look for a rational reason for these others, and I.
Well, I would, I would surmise that if the public works director, and really, in my opinion, the assistant director can't get to a certain part of the county or into Mobile County after a hurricane to clear the streets, that that is pretty much the same as public safety, that, that's just my opinion on it, so.
Well, if, if I may, at some level, I, I really agree with both of you. My opinion, and I've long thought that new hires, and, and the resolution specifies new hires, that they be required within a certain period to locate to Mobile County. Now, my concern is that, that we have people that are on staff, and some of them are deputy directors and have been working for the county for over 20 years, and are very talented, experienced, dedicated, and I don't want to see us in a position where we lose that talent just because of that residency requirement in that situation. What I was prepared to do today is leave the resolution as is, but add an addendum to that that would read, "This policy does not affect the promotional advancement into these positions of Mobile County employees within the system before August 8, 2022." So that whoever is currently employed before we actually approve this, it does not affect them. They were not hired with this, this requirement in place, and they may have intentions of hopefully advancing their careers here with the county, and they've worked hard, and I don't want to be an obstacle to that, but I think anybody that we hire into one of these director positions needs to understand at the point of being hired that that is what the county expects, and that within a certain period of time, reasonable time during their probationary period, or not till after their probationary period, but within a time after that, that if they accept the job, that that would be an employment requirement for them. That's how I feel about it.
So, as I read the rule, and we've kicked it, I think, back to legal, but as I read the rule, well, what it rules says is, "If an appointing authority has a residency requirement, only those complying with residence qualifications shall be certified." So, if we have this rule in place, if that person does not always, already meet the residency requirement, they won't even make it to the list to be interviewed. They won't, we won't, they won't even be on that certified list to re-receive, and then to make an offer, that's, it's.
Are these Personnel Board rules or state law?
This is, what is this?
Because that may need to be changed.
This is a Personnel Board rule.
Okay.
Section 1500 Appointments.
Yeah.
So, what we do, we make an offer, but then we attach a condition to the offer. So, I guess what that would mean, and I don't know how that would work with the rules as a practical matter, we hire somebody and they say, "Oh, yeah, I'm going to move," and then don't. What happens then?
Well, they understood, they understand the conditions when they're hired. I mean, that's a condition of employment for a new hire in a director position.
Well, and I guess the question for me is, can we create that kind of condition for a classified employee? I mean, do we have the authority?
Well, that is, that is the question of the day here, and I think that let's let our very capable attorney look into this and figure out if this is feasible, and if not, why not, and what we can do to affect that. How's that?
That's fine, the only objection I have is your addendum, because I still feel like, even if you're working here already as a deputy director, if, if you want that position as a director, and I'll go back and say that I know that recently someone wanted to be a director that lived in Baldwin County, they were being offered a job by the Baldwin County Commission, and, and they left, and they work for Baldwin County Commission now because they weren't willing, I just, I mean, I just don't want to compromise on how I feel about it, and now, that's, I think if, if, if you're a deputy director and you want the job, then you should be willing to live in Mobile, and that's just my position on it.
Well, the way it stands now, there's no residency requirement, and so, I guess the question is, do we put a residency requirement on new hires, or do we leave it as is? That's kind of the choice we have as far as this goes right now, because I will not put that requirement on employees who have been here 20 years, who are deputy directors, who have an opportunity because they have experience, talent, knowledge, everything they need to move into a director position. So, I think that's where we are, Commissioner.
Well, when you, when you again go back to a situation where the public works director or the county engineer lives in Baldwin County, and you have a catastrophic storm, and they may not even potentially be able to get to the county that's paying them in excess of $100,000 a year to clear the streets, I just, you know, I just feel like they should live in Mobile County.
I understand, I think there's always potentially, could be a problem if you do live in Mobile County, if you live in Citronelle, you may not be able to get to Darwin Island, you know, there, there always could be issues there, but I think overall, I think the risk is worth it when it comes to having the talent, knowledge, and experience to be able to take advantage of that in that position.
Man, I don't, I don't think we're in a, I think our position right now is our public works director lives in Mobile County, our engineer lives in Mobile County.
And ultimately, it's up to the Commission at the end of the day regardless.
Right.
On hiring those positions. So, that can be taken into consideration if, if someone is moving into that position, and one, and, and any of the three of us can decide whether to support that person or not for that very reason.
No, well, I guess the way I look at it is not so much as an elected official, but as a citizen of Mobile County and where my tax dollars go, and, you know, I have this same position with, I've, I've taken this, I hate to keep going on about this, but I've taken the same position with companies who come to us or corporations that come to us asking for economic incentives when a majority of their employees live in other communities who do not support their business, and we do support their business, and when they hire, when their hiring practices are to hire people who do not live in our community, or, when I say community, I, I, I don't have anything against Jackson County, or Mississippi, or Pensacola, or Baldwin County, but I was elected to represent the people in Mobile County, and, you know, I'm going to fight for those people to have the good jobs in our community, and that's really what it boils down to, so, anyway, thank you, I've said enough.
Certainly, certainly, I think at this point, let's get a report back, an opinion back from our attorney, and, and then we can kind of go from there, okay? Anything else, Commissioner?
Let me say, I respect your position on it, I just have a different, we just have a different opinion on it.
I know, but I, I do have a question. At one point in time, I know there was an item that came before the Commission, it was prior to your taking office, Commissioner, about a policy for residency requirement, was that, but nothing was ever approved, okay?
It was never a resolution. If I may, Commissioner, if we do go this route, and after Jay looks into it for the future, if we're looking at doing this, it's going to have a ripple effect on the deputy directors, because we are looking at the deputy directors, the reason why we want to put them in that position is to move into the position of the, the director. So, you know, want to talk about, do you want to include them or not? Because if we put them in and they work here 10 years, it's 10 years before the administrator, we're back in the same boat, we have our most.
That is exactly my concern.
Or not only that, what if, what if you decide that you're a deputy director and the, or you're the county, the public works director, let's just say that Ricky decides he's going to retire next year, Neil lives in Mobile, what if he goes, "You know, I don't think I want to live in Mobile much longer," and he goes ahead and moves to Baldwin County? Are we then going to promote him into the public works director position? You know, that's where I see some issues. Not that I would probably want Neil to be the public works director.
He's using you for an example.
Just, just an example, Neil.
Okay, all right, well, let's, let's await hearing from Jay on that one. Okay?
Commissioners, to number 17, just, the cartograph is on there to purchase our work order, new work order system and a 3-1-1 system.
Right.
I will not be here Monday, I will be at a Ashtoe Conference, so I won't be able to answer any questions. If y'all have any this afternoon or anything, feel free to call me, I'll be glad to answer any, but that, that's basically what that insight public sector for Carter is purchasing our new work order system, and that includes the, that 3-1-1 system that we looked at.
Okay.
Okay, and it does integrate with Workday, and it will integrate with our new Okay, and it does integrate with Workday, and it will integrate with our new, our fuel system that we have, and so, we looked into all of that to make sure that it will accommodate what Dana has requested as well.
Okay. How, and I know I'm putting somebody on the spot here, but how is Workday going so far? Is that you? Is it you I'm putting on the spot?
I mean, it's going great, no.
That's her story, and she's sticking to it.
It's the first week, so we work through, working through process issues and sign-on issues, but relatively speaking, the consultants that are here are saying that it's relatively quiet, considering, you know, this big of an implementation, so, yeah, we're just working through it. Everybody, please be patient, everybody's been nice and patient, so I appreciate it.
Well, we hope it stays that way. All right, thank you. Okay, Brian?
We're ready. Okay, Commissioners, consider taking the following action. Item number one, adopt a resolution approving the revised construction agreement with the State of Alabama, and this is for our Schillinger's Road South project from Three-Nice Road northward, one of our two thousand eight Page Gill projects. We had an agreement with the State of Alabama to utilize ten million dollars' worth of state funds on that, and we used about eight point nine, so we're revising that construction agreement, and we're going to take that one point one million that's remaining from this project, and we're going to move it over to our Tana Williams Road project, the one that we just bid and awarded from Snow Road in eastward. So, that will be another agreement with the State of Alabama, that'll be forthcoming in about a month, so, that should take care of that, moving that money.
Okay.
Item number two, authorize acquisition of property acceptance of right-of-way deeds as listed. Item number three, approve the right-of-way easement agreement for Track Eight on one of our twenty-twenty Page Gill projects. Item four, accept annual contract renewal with Lingeman for a one-year maintenance agreement, and this is for some survey equipment that we have for our public works department. Item number five, approve a preliminary and final plat of Wallace Estates, that's in Commission District Two. Also approve preliminary and final plat of Mason Family Estates Two, that's in Commission District Three, and approve preliminary and final plat of Schmidt Lake Subdivision, and that is also on Commission District Three. Item six is to rescind a resolution assenting to the vacation of a twenty-foot drainage and utility easement that was approved on the July seventh. Item number forty-four, agenda. Item seven.
Why, why rescind it?
Absolutely, go ahead.
They, they had, they decided, let me, let me rephrase that. We were waiting on a third resolution, and they were not quite ready to present that to us, and they asked us to put the first two on the agenda, so we did that, and upon trying to create the resolution for that third item, they decided to change the way they were going to do it, and include these two into one, and then put the third one on a separate, so we're rescinding these, and the next two items on the agenda, item eight and nine, will take care of, of the new correct resolutions with all that curvature. Yeah. So, we're rescinding items six and seven, and then we will ask you to adopt Resolution Eight and Nine, that will have the proper descriptions to get that taken care of.
Okay.
Item ten, approve right-of-way easement agreement for Track Three, one of our twenty-eighteen Page Gill projects. Item eleven, adopt a resolution supplementing the uniform regulations for the placement of utility facilities on Mobile County right-of-way, that was adopted in June twelfth of two thousand.
So, what is this going to do? I, I see what it says, but why does this matter?
The, the Commission adopted the regulations, the uniform regulations for the placement of utilities, and we strive in every manner to comply with the ALDOT utility manual. Well, ALDOT is now allowing the use of HDP pipe installation inside of right-of-ways, but they will not modify their utility manual. So, we want to be able to utilize this, so by a separate email correspondence from the State stating that they are, have been allowing this, we would like to allow our utilities also to utilize this technology, this new technology, so we would just ask that you would just.
So, what does, what does allowing, being able to use HDP pipe, how is that different or better than what we're doing now?
Well, whenever they're doing bores underneath a road, certain facilities require that you be pretty deep, okay, pressurized systems, like ten feet or greater depth, and whenever they're going down and then coming back up, the steel pipe encasements that are now required in the utility manual will not allow them to do with any flexibility.
Curvature.
The curvature like this, this HDP pipe will allow them to go down and then come back up inside of our right-of-ways. It's a good technology, we have vetted it through South Alabama Utilities, we've asked for examples out in the field, and our forces have gone out there and looked at this stuff, it appears to work really well, so we would like to allow them to use this new technology and new products, but it does not comply technically with the ALDOT utility manual, but they have stated to us via correspondence that they're, they've been allowing this stuff, so we would like to allow them also.
Okay, sounds like they need to make a revision.
They do, but they're not going to, so we would ask that you just allow us to modify our uniform regulations that were adopted in two thousand to allow this.
Okay.
Okay. Item twelve, approve final plat of Riverside, that's in Commission District Three. Add Riverside Circle to the private road inventory.
Do you have any, is that a single subdivision, or is that a?
It's down there on BB Point, it's a single subdivision, but it's a private road subdivision, so they have to construct the roads to our private road standards.
How many lots that's going to end up being?
This is the one large parcel that was divided.
This is ten.
Ten lots.
It's one large parcel that has a single house on it.
Right.
To go on for quite some time.
They actually did a pretty good, pretty good job on this one, Commissioner, yeah. So, we would ask that you approve that.
I see it now, ten lots, I was.
Item thirteen, approve setting the following speed limits as listed, and Commissioners, we are working with our council for the twenty-twenty-two Page Gill program, getting ready to email them all the additional information that they need to generate the three resolutions for the twenty-twenty-two Page Gill program, and we'll have those for you Monday. First resolution being approving the engineering maps and reports for the twenty-twenty-two Page Gill. The second resolution will be to approve the publication of the notice for the Page Gill program, and then Resolution number three will be calling for a special election for the issuance of sixty-nine million, a principal amount for the twenty-twenty-two Page Gill program. We'll have that for you Monday as add-ons.
Excellent, I guess you'll be breathing a sigh of relief at that point, that's been a lot of work, hasn't it?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We're going to add a little sentence to number twelve, it'll just be contingent upon them completing the punch list, that there's a few items that they have to correct up before, we go ahead and get it approved, and then before Brian signs, the county engineer signs the plat, they will have to have completed the, the punch list.
Okay, so you'll make that revision for Monday's agenda?
We'll make this revision on this before we turn it in Monday, for Monday's agenda.
Very good. Anything else?
That is it.
Commissioners, any comments? Okay, well then, we stand adjourned until Monday's meeting.